Mr. Chairman, Board Members, Steve Hale, Kurt Hale, and Harold Rosen, Division 620. This is an application. There's some change in size of the building, it's really a modernization of the parking and loading area in order to make the building more marketable. For years, this was the Hayward manufacturing building, and they've downsized, and right now they are committed to the property by way of a long-term lease, both portion of the property. And the balance of the property has been shortened, short-term, as I call it, Durro Bag. What we're looking at, and my client, I purchased the property in fall last year, and what we're looking at is monitoring the loading area and parking areas to make the building certainly more marketable, and also improve circulation, accessibility, and both areas will attract consistent tenants, consistent short-term tenants to remain at that location. We don't want to have buildings like this, not the parking lot. And that is really the extent of the application. We're here before this board, because we are in the MRC zone, technically, in the MRC zone, a non-conforming use, it's a pre-existing condition and it's not being changed. First of all, there is existing non-conformity. Parking, well, they call it parking in the MRC zone, is based on the lot size, not based upon use, not based upon building size, and we're in fact, in recent parking that's available, we hear testimony that there's more than active parking at this site. That's the limits of what we're looking for with the property, and if you receive the Harvard consultants letter, no problem applying to any of those types of issues. We also received various departmental comments, all of which recommend the application and help in applying those conditions. So what I'd like to do first, or if there's some preliminary questions, is pull upon Harold Campbell, who's representative of the owner of the property.
Harold Campbell, Weston Harold Campbell. His name is spelled C-N-P-B-E. I'm with Cassidy Turley, New Jersey, and we're the managing agent for Division 620 Division Street, the owner of the property. Cassidy Turley is C-A-S-S-I-D-Y, T-U-R-L-Y, has been as a managing agent for Truino,
Mr. Campbell, you're the property manager?
Yes.
And you heard my opening statement to the board, if you confirm the acquisition of the property, a little bit of history, what's the mission of the property?
Your history was very well stated, and the property was purchased by Truino in the fall 2001.
And the present events, briefly explain to the board the present events.
The Hayward tenant occupying the office area in front of the building was the previous owner.
I cannot understand what you're saying.
The Hayward tenant, who is occupying the office area in front of the building, was previously the owner and purchased the building from them, and are now a long-term tenant in that area, and then the balance of the building is occupied by a short-term tenant called Durro Bag.
Can you briefly explain to the board, I'm sure knowing what it is, what type of company that is, and right now, are you using only the office space?
Yes, Hayward is in the pool technology business, should be well-known, and they now only require the office area of the building.
And what about Durro Bag?
Durro Bag is using the warehouse area for bag distribution and warehousing.
And has experience in real estate and is property manager, why are the improvements that are being proposed here important to this property?
We understand that the market is looking for smaller spaces, and we've been preparing for the market. We would like to improve the lot and dock areas prepared. We anticipate, we know that the market requires smaller spaces typically, so we ultimately maintain, instead of having one large warehouse area, that could be two tenant spaces instead of one in the warehouse, as indicated in the plans.
And what about the need for the areas of additional loading docks?
It is our opinion that it would be more suitable for the marketplace and more functional on those challenging if there were more dock doors, which are already proposed.
Now, you're familiar with the operation of both of these tenants at the property at this time?
Yes.
And from your observations, we're seeking the parking variance for that explained in the MRC zone, it's not the time for this, but how do you find parking availability for both the existing tenants?
They're in the warehouse.
Or the active parking for both areas?
Yes, we deserve that. We're a local, New Jersey-based company, we're on-site weekly monitoring activity there, and we see that there are no problems.
You're on-site and monitor?
We're on-site weekly, and we monitor the activity at that site weekly, and we do not observe any parking problems. We're very close with the tenants and occupy the building.
And if you've had an opportunity to give the departmental comments, something to give to the owner, if you're down with professionals, do you have any problem complying with any terms of conditions?
No.
Thank you. If I have no further questions at this time, Mr. Campbell.
Commissioners, any questions to this witness? See none. You talked about the apartment, you're talking about Harvard consultant?
Correct.
So we're in the vessel, we're just in plant safety, and you guys can just go to that?
Yes, we, our site engineer will be up next, and so I was going to figure, also comment on fire, whatever, we may have a problem.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like now to pull upon Richard Jarrell.
Richard Jarrell, J-A-R-L-L, address 42 Oakmont, OK, New York, Harvard, East End. Mr. Jarrell, can you give the board the benefit of your work, educational experience? Certainly. I got my undergraduate degree from the University of Baltimore, Spence, in the kindergarten, and went on to NJIT, and got my master's degree in civil engineering there. Been licensed in New Jersey since 1993, also licensed in New York, Pennsylvania, and so the Connecticut, Florida, Michigan, and Vermont.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner, you've heard my opening statement, Mr. Jarrell, and also the testimony of Mr. Campbell, he could provide the board an overview of the existing additions to the site, and what's proposed by way of improvements.
The existing site is 5.9 or increasing size, so located in the MRC zone, so existing building, and the footprint of the building is 135,882 square feet. And the intended project is to upgrade and modernize the loading dock area and parking area. By doing that, we're introducing eight additional loading dock areas, improving the truck traffic circulation throughout the parking area, we're separating the large parking area from the trucks. We're also building an EDA ramp to get access into the building. Projects require three bulk areas. They are one for parking, currently there's 116 parking spaces on the site, does not include requirements, so an existing non-conforming use, the parking space is 140 square feet on the site area. We are adding an additional 29 spaces, so we're making the deficiency gap, bringing it up to a total of 145 spaces. And other two non-conforming uses, we keep on changing, the front yard setback is required at 35 feet, and woodwork lane is existing at 0 feet. And the rear yard setback is required at 25 feet, and is currently 403 feet, and neither of those are changed.
As I noted in my open, there's no change in the size of the footprint, or where the building is at, or has probably been.
The improvements we're going to the site, as I said, were eight loading docks, empty parking stalls for trucks, we're installing concrete truck bags, where the trucks rest on there currently, they're just strips concrete. We're adding new drainage and drainage, it's currently water ponds and water, and correct those problems. There will be new striping, which will separate the car parking from the truck bags. We're improving the truck circulation throughout the lot, so that they can back into the loading dock, it's currently, if there's a truck at the end, they can get to the next one. We're modifying that fair amount, adding new monitors, curbing returning frequencies, so the trucks can pull them out easier, and we're removing two existing utility poles and placing utilities on the ground.
Now, there were, as Chairman noted, a few items were raised by Harvard consultants, with respect to lighting, lighting, is lighting the site adequate, and is any issue addressed as a requirement?
Yes, but we're doing, we're providing two mobiles, so we're giving two utility lights, we feel the lighting for the avenue is adequate.
And any problem in replacing the curb sidewalk that needs to be done along the property? And with respect to plant safety, these street trees are worth?
Yes, but we actually prefer not to plant any plant safety, we'd like to allow the trucks to see the traffic on Fairmont, instead of exiting, and their loading docks, and also going into the lot, so that they can see which loading docks are available.
Even possible.
And then if we plant shade trees in that area, they'll eventually get up into utility gardens and become a means of growing.
So we would be asked for a way for that requirement? Are there perhaps some lower areas that could be added that wouldn't interfere with the slight line?
There are, we're struggling with something, 18 inches, 24 inches.
We can also ask about that. We consider that as a benefit. And as far as the, any problem in repairing the areas on Fairmont, the fence?
That system fence will be repaired.
And there's also comment from the fire department about maintaining the fire line at 20 feet wide, any problem applying to that?
Don't have a problem, as you're questioning for Rich Datzel, we don't know where he wants that.
But it can be accommodated.
But it can be accommodated, so it's part of the property. And the rest of the comments from Harvard, we have the wishes.
And in your opinion, will this, or what impact will the site changes have on the function of the site? Will the site changes have on the function of the site?
I believe it will improve the function of the site, and allows for the trucks to move around easier on the site, separating the barriers. Also, it will make it easier for the owner to release the building, it's more attractive to the truck.
Thank you. I have no further questions at this time.
Commissioner, is there any questions to this witness? Mr. Galavan, are you satisfied with this testimony?
I'm satisfied with all of the questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just like to briefly pull upon our official planner, Mr. Earl Kizel.
My name is Erwin H. Kizel, K-I-Z-E-L. I am a licensed professional planner and licensed architect in the state of New Jersey since 1981. I apologize, Erwin H. Kizel, 42 Oakmont Parkway, Livingston, New Jersey.
Now, Mr. Kizel, if you could give the name or the name of the person for that?
Benefit of your credentials. Okay, I'm a licensed architect and professional planner in the state of New Jersey since 1981. I'm the principal of the firm of Jarrell Kizel Architects and Engineers, Livingston, New Jersey, since 1990. Jarrell Kizel, K-I-Z-E-L, like my name, Livingston, New Jersey. I've been with the firm since 1991. I have a bachelor of architecture degree from Pratt Institute in 1977, and I've been in the business since 1977. I've appeared before on boards throughout the state of New Jersey, where I've testified as a professional planner, where I've been set in this office.
Thank you very much. Can you put the testimony so far this evening, Mr. Campbell and Mr. Jarrell? And from a planning standpoint, you recognize that there's no changes in the operational tendency, but in fact, improved in the parking and loading areas, but if you could please address that from a planning standpoint?
Well, we have a technical expansion of the non-conforming use. Basically, what we have is, we're in the MRC zone, which is an industrial zone within the city of Elizabeth. The MRC allows like manufacturing, corporate business, research, and more scale detail. We have, our use happens to be distribution and trucking, which is excluded from this particular zone. But in my exploration of the surrounding areas, I found that pretty much all of the uses of the surrounding properties fall within the category, in my opinion, of distribution and trucking. I mean, we have a variety of intermodal equipment companies, which is distribution and trucking. We have all kinds of logistics companies, so the surrounding area is all the same use as our existing non-conforming use. In terms of the building itself and the property itself, as we have several uses, we have the office use on Division Street, which is an improved use. I would note that the building on Division Street presents a very nice appearance. It has a concrete facade with ribbon windows along the front, and it makes for a good impression as one drives along Division Street. The current style of the building, where we're doing improvements, needs those improvements. The parking lot is, a lot of the area is broken up, and it is really in this disorder insofar as there are no striped parking spaces and more striped loading spaces. So what we're doing with this project is really improving the quality of the site itself by delineating those spaces in order out of disorder. So by so doing, we're improving the use, and we're really improving the neighborhood by making these changes. So the building is divided kind of in three areas, the front, like I said, is office, and then in the back of it are two warehouse spaces. In terms of the bulk, so the bulk areas, as Mr. Jarrell indicated, we have a minimum front yard setback, existing non-conformities, again, we're not expanding the building footprint at all, so we have an existing condition where we have a situation where three of the road, three of the sides of the building face the street. So under the ordinance, this wall constitutes three front yards. The frontage on Division Street is compliant, but as was indicated, the frontages on the two side streets are not compliant, but again, they're not being expanded upon. In terms of the parking, we are adding 29 additional car parking spaces to this facility. We have non-conforming parking, which we will minimize the non-performances by adding the car parking. The ordinance requires one space per 1400 square feet of site area. It doesn't establish the spaces based on the intensity for use of the site, but merely the size of the site. So under that criteria, 185 parking spaces are required. Currently, the site has 116 parking spaces. Once the improvements are completed and the addition of the 29 spots are incorporated, we will have 145 spaces, which significantly decreases the level of non-conformity of the parking. In addition to the parking for cars, we're also, you know, providing additional parking for the trucks. We have eight additional truck loading spots and 11 additional truck parking spaces. So by so doing, we are reducing the extent of the non-conformities. With respect to the zoning criteria itself, like I stated, we are reducing the extent of the non-conformities as far as the C-variants, the bulk areas, and as far as the D2 variants is concerned, like while it's a technical expansion, it's really an improvement of the overall of the property. And the criteria amongst others is, can this be granted without a substantial detriment to the public good? And of course, in our, in my opinion, it could be, because we're making a significant improvement to the property. And as far as the criteria with respect to the substantial impairment to the intention of purpose of the zoning ordinance, I find that this does not substantially impair purpose and intention of the zoning ordinance. Due to the fact that we're continuing the same use, the building gives a good appearance, and that the surrounding uses are already non-compliant, non-conformant, and we're just adding to the attractiveness and to the efficiency of the site, so we are not hurting property as a building, or even, we're not hurting, we're not reducing any noise, we're not reducing any pollution. In my opinion, we would be reducing that to a certain extent because of the fact that we have better circulation and better water to the parking lots, we won't have the trucks and the trainways jockeying position on the lot, we'll have, like I said, a nice orderly appearance, and consequently, we're improving upon the existing conditions of the site. The property owners, if this, you know, should this be enforced, the property owners would suffer a lot of hardship, so consequently, I feel that this use is particularly suitable for the site, and for several reasons. It's very close to North Liberty International Airport, and the activities going on there with respect to transportation, and it's also very close to major transportation routes, so it's by improving this property, we're only improving upon the intention of zoning ordinance, which indicates that we need to take advantage of the factor of the area, which is something that we're dealing with this project.
Thank you very much. I have no further questions at this time.
Commissioners, any questions to this witness? See none.
We have no further questions.
Now, are there any members of the public who are in favor or against this application? Please come forward. See none, was working sessions. Commissioners, wish you a pleasure.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Galvez. I think it's a very easy application. First of all, the applicant is coming for the board, not changing their use. It's similar, without some handling. Not only that, they're coming here, they're telling us, I don't know that they're coming here to...
I can't understand you speak more directly than I can.
Sorry. Not only not changing the use, they are also coming here, they're making various site changes and improvements, not only to their benefit, but also will benefit the neighborhood. Parking is an issue, obviously, all throughout the neighborhood, and parking is an issue, it will benefit their use, their type of work.
Thank you. Commissioner Galvez, any questions or comments? Commissioner Dixon, any questions or comments? Commissioner Canada, Commissioner Hady, Commissioner Valdez, see none, I too, like the application, we're changing the footprint, improving, I adhere to city engineers' best for the landscape, it's here in my heart, I will make sure that the load troubles enforced throughout. Do I have a motion? Motion to approve by Commissioner Hady, who has a second. Second by Commissioner Dixon, now I'm second to turn to her.
Commissioner McCall.
Aye.
Commissioner Hady.
Aye.
Commissioner Canada.
Aye.
Commissioner Dixon.
Aye.
Commissioner Galvez.
Aye.
Commissioner Valdez.
Aye.
Commissioner McCall.
Thank you.
Raising reception of the signs at the ground level would reveal boys from a simply a hole. So all said, from a visual standpoint, we're certainly improving visual quality of the sign, the area. Functionally, this is amongst the most benign types of land use that are, this is an unmanned facility, it won't be monitored, and for the commissioners who are concerned about maintenance, this is a rarely maintained structure, certainly less maintained, will require less maintenance than the traditional paper concrete, which requires man to go up on that 160-foot ladder, perhaps once a month, these people, month-to-month contracts. So this will be something that is swapped out with only without avoiding that safety issue. Certainly, it's not a traffic generator, and it's not an environmental, you know, front use as well. All said, this is a good application from a planning standpoint, it's very clear that it meets essential tests, it's consistent with the vision of Elizabeth, that's a progressive city, master plan, and it really just reflects an evolution of use, and zoning is not really quite up to that. So that said, I believe this is a good application, and from a planning standpoint, it's important.
I have no further questions. Commissioners, any questions to this witness?
I got a question.
Commissioner Valdez.
There's a good idea about that building, I'm very concerned about that weight. The existing billboard, you know, is going to be less weight than the new one, or?
These billboards are more structurally sound than the billboard that's there now. There is, there is a... out. There's an inherent build-in to the structural integrity. You must see structural codes to get this building up. There's a weight load factor, there are many factors that would be considered as a structural load in some of the structure.
Any other questions, Commissioners?
Yes.
Commissioner.
As you stated, the information on the visual job, say for the hamburgers, where they go on the slipway and the hamburger goes down on the surface of the screen, you have information be available that quickly?
Yes, as quickly as the authorities get the message out and gets tied to the system, brings the system.
Any other questions, Commissioners?
My question is for number seven. I still have this building here.
You saw it, Mr. Duncan, just waiting.
I said that number seven, right there. And then also a building, it is a not only commercial, but a residential also, but the two sentence notice to those tenants.
Thanks, Matt. My last question was whether or not that property is noticed.
Is there a notice to the tenants yet?
The notice goes to where it's listed on the tax rolls of the city of Elizabeth. There's the property, helps the property in the 78 to 10.
Sorry, John.
The property in question was noticed per your tax list. It's not the applicant's obligation to make sure tenants in the building get notice. It goes to the listed property or produced by the tax assessor.
Commissioner, this is your information. Under state law, a notice is given by an applicant. The applicant only is obligated to notify the owner of the property. They're not legally obligated to send notice to every individual tenant in a given building. That's a function of state law that we can mandate when an applicant go above and beyond the state law requirements.
Question one, how often will the sign change?
Yeah, according to the state permit, it's every eight seconds as a state requirement that's according to the state regulations. Yes, but it could be higher than that if the applicant chooses. Well, with that, there's a problem with that because this sign is tied to whatever the applicant operates and the system is operating simultaneously. So it has a cumulative effect on how it moves.
Noticing that there are serious reforms on Crackout Street, easily built for the site and heading toward the sat mount and bridge. Catwalk was on that side, on the block, on the middle of that side. Would it be better if that catwalk was solid in order to further minimize any deal off impact on the case of residents in that area? I don't know if we're the better person to answer that, or to the engineer.
That may be. The only thing I'll throw out is that maybe a permission that it had to be open for rain, ice, and slippage and...
I'm just saying if there's a better way to help further minimize any legal barrier.
Mr. Irwin, I certainly have a question. If you'd like to come forward.
We have a question.
I would like, I would like to ask a question to the panel, please.
Commissioner McHale. A resident down at the ground level looking up, will he be able to see the sign?
Well, I...
The message itself, not the sign, the message.
No, I'll be able to see it again because of how the light being cast, how it would not down, so I won't guess.
So that would affect him by all the light?
No, the sign is on, the sign is on, the orientation of the sign is going to stay the way it is now. So to the extent that those residents are at the back of the sign, I think...
You like to be in stable lighting, I guess, I'm saying.
No, stable lighting effects, they are not.
Okay. Actually, I have a question, please. Why do the best apps on Crackout Street? I believe it's of the white roof. Will I be able to see the sun from the window? Will I be able to read the sun?
From Crackout Street, you may be aligned with the face of the billboard again, it is oriented towards the highway, not having to see that the offset's going from that to that. Those used to play with residential is a non-conforming use in that area. This is an area that can actually be completely surrounded with those houses.
In this yellow housing section, clear channel, is this an entire parcel planned?
A clear channel is ten.
Is it ten? All right, I have another question. Any other questions at this time? Thank you, Paul.
Kevin Donovan, D O L O B A N. We're talking about the vice president of real estate located at 99 Park Avenue, New York, New York.
Mr. Donovan, can you explain the board and the public, how long have they affiliated with their channel?
I've been with the company for seven years and I oversee the real estate portfolio of the entire market, which includes northern New Jersey, southern Connecticut, Westchester, and all of New York City and the five boroughs.
If you would address the board's latest question regarding...
The catwalk, billboard that's facing eastbound towards that mile. Side facing Crackout. If that catwalk may have a solid authority, would that further assist in preventing any deal off eventual impact for some of the homeowners along Crackout Street to a lesser extent and the homeowners may have?
To be honest with you, it's really not going to make a difference because the catwalk is not going to prevent any light from descending from an LED panel. Again, the LED panel is directional light that goes to the roadway. There is no spill over whatsoever. It's directed at the road. The sign is up there now, that has spill over light, both down, on the sides, up in the air. This is directed to the roadway and you will not get spill over. The other point that I think is important is that the catwalk itself has to be a seater or a mesh type metal because of the icing issues and safety requirements that are standard for the industry. So those catwalks really can be changed.
Let's see, trying to mention, does the tenant have a catwalk, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
I see some full, full, you know, it's... Okay, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. We do not. Okay, Commissioners, we're going to the board's section. Oh, sorry, are there any members of the public who should speak before this application? Please step forward. Seeing none, that was a word in session. What's your point, Commissioners? Commissioner McHale.
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of comments. Everything I've heard is a bit positive, it's a bit gross. I mean, we're looking at a sign, an existing sign that aesthetically is a little more pleasant. There's safety benefits out of this design.
Sorry.
There are safety benefits coming through based on the sign, maintenance, et cetera, et cetera. I saw pictures, that sign will fall down and around, so that's going to work. Downside, downsizing as it was, and of course, the operating and the technology. I'm totally赞成 this application.
Thank you, Commissioners. Commissioners, the thoughts? Do you have any comments? Commissioner Campbell?
I have a favorite application.
Okay, I'm sorry, Commissioner Dixon. Commissioner Eadie?
I too have a bigger application. It's a safety measure of the information will be put out there fast, it's going to make a difference.
Thank you. Commissioner Valdez. I also have a problem with this application. It's a way of the future, but we're stopped. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner McHale, so I have a second. Second by Commissioner Eadie. Now, Secretary Roll call.
Commissioner McHale.
Aye.
Commissioner Eadie.
Aye.
Commissioner Dixon.
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan.
Aye.
Commissioner Valdez.
Aye.
Commissioner McHale.
Aye.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time, thanks a lot. All right, I think I'm going to take a short break before we go to the next application for your research. Thank you.